Before we start the public hearing.
I would like to speak.
Sure. Do they get three minutes? Three minutes, okay. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
I am Janice Chupka, and I have been sworn.
Okay.
Can you put back up the one that has Harvey up there?
Sure.
This is already a problem with Gilchrist Park anyway. But I have talked to the city project manager, and she's very, very nice. And she explained to me about the parking that was coming for the park, which we are very, very excited about it because now people will no longer park on the grass and we might have some grass to play on. However, on Harvey Street, there is yellow curbs on both ends. People still park there. There are only two parking areas actually left that aren't yellow. One of them is directly in front of my driveway and the other one is a little bit further, just a little bit further down. When people park there, even in the, and they're in the designated spots and you've got a lot of influx of traffic, there will be no way any emergency vehicle can get down there. Now, currently, I am the only driveway on that road. So currently, I am the only driveway that is directly affected. And I understand all those side streets people can park on. However, everyone, and I mean everyone, uses Harvey as a cut-through coming off of 41. So let me just tell you, as it stands right now, I have a problem getting in and out of my driveway now. Now you're going to add people that are not going to get used to parking on Gilchrist Park and a 250-seat restaurant. Now, I'm going to tell you where they're going to park because I've seen it. I've been here a year. I know where they park. So I'm not asking for anything that's already not there. And last but not least, there is an ordinance, a city ordinance, that you are only supposed to park on the east side of Harvey anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, now would be the time on the rezoning. Anybody like to speak on the rezoning? Please make your way to the podium. State your name that you've been sworn. If you have not been sworn, you need to be sworn, and you have three minutes.
I'm Wendy Mueller. I've been sworn. A couple of things. The traffic study on March 24th. Well, the park is closed, so there's nobody on the, on the street. It was Friday. It was the morning. It was the afternoon. But there's no events going on. So that was a bogus traffic study, in my opinion. Reed Esplanade is going to have straight-on parking and nobody on the grass anymore. If you've ever gone down on pickleball day, you know right now that 250, 63 cars, they're not going to park in the public parking. They're going to park at Hurricane Charlie's. They're going to park down at the park. And they're going to take up all of that area. My concern honestly is the way this is conducted. We get an urban village city approval. No, I'm okay with that. That means that restaurant could still go in, but he would have to provide parking. And you see, the way to get around this is, the next step is to get City Center approved. If City Center is approved, and you were listening, you know that he can use the public parking. That's wonderful, except for the fact that we already have Shorty's, the municipal building itself where we're, we're all parked, and another restaurant with lead-in from both sides. It doesn't make sense to me that it should be approved as City Center, not because it shouldn't be approved, but because the next step is to lead in and say, well, why not be, approve this restaurant? He no longer needs to have parking for his restaurant of 250 people because he's now part of City Center. So that's the chain of events. And I just find it very, very difficult to understand how a city that wants to grow like Naples hasn't seen what's happened to Naples because of the lack of parking. My parking is my problem. The restaurant, I can't wait to go. Just figure out the parking. And I think approving this second section gives them every right to ignore me. And that's all I have to say.
Anybody like to speak? Please make your way to the podium.
Yes, once again, Bill Leach. I have been sworn. I'm a resident of PGI. I think I jumped the gun a little bit in my previous statement, but it stands, I just want to be on record as opposing this. You would, you just approved a portion of this as a first reading. And now we spent the last 15 or 20 minutes looking at various situations that are going to occur. You can't be a little bit pregnant. Now, curbing, parking, signage, it's urban creep moving right into residential area. And I just want to go on record again as opposing it. As much as I'd love to see a restaurant there, all these other conditions make it somewhat intolerable for me personally, and I'm sure for people who live immediately in that area, to now live with this situation on an ongoing basis. There's lots of property on 41, lots of it. That's where it should go. Thank you. And I didn't get the red light this time.
Make your way to the podium, please. This is now the time to speak on this rezoning. This is the time for public comments. Please make your way to the podium if you would like to speak on this item.
Marilyn Smith, Mooney, and I have been sworn. One question, just for my own information. The parcels directly across, the vacant parcels directly across from the annex, the corner one, is that private property owner?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
And the one next to it is also?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious about that. With regard to the parking on Harvey Street. This was a subject for all of these cross-streets many years ago. It's come up so many times over the years on City Council. And several times, we had entertained the idea, and I believe some of the times it was before you were here, Howard, of having parking on just one side of each one of those streets and not permitting it on the other side. I would actually suggest you reconsider that again because every once in a while, I go down one of those streets and somebody already started heading the other way down that street. And somebody's got to back up and find a driveway to back into or pull into to let the traffic by. In other words, consider what happens if you have an emergency and need a fire truck to go down one of those streets when parking is on both sides of all of those side streets? We have that at night continually along those side streets, especially in the first block between Reta and Marion, even more so than the rest of it. So consider again the possibility of only allowing parking on one side of those streets in that first block. And if you did, then perhaps you could give consideration to have Harvey only have parking on the side of the street where the City Hall is and not on the residential side of the street.
Anybody else like to speak? Please make your way to the podium. I'll call one more time.
Bob Fritz, Macedonia Drive, Punta Gorda. I have not been sworn.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Please state your full name again for me now that you're sworn.
Okay, name is Bob Fritz. Great project. Problem is parking. City staff says the restaurant would require 53 spots, but that's no problem because there's public parking adjacent to it. That is a problem. If the restaurant controlled the 53 spaces, no problem. They do not. There are many, many events in Punta Gorda that utilize that parking. Typically, a Saturday is the best day for a restaurant. Typically, what goes on in Punta Gorda, the big events, happen on weekends. That parking is going to be used up by events going on. Plenty of times I've gone there and it's full. You know, what happens to the restaurant on a Saturday afternoon, a Saturday evening, when there's event going on in, in the center market? There is no parking. If I was PG Waterfront Hotel, I'd be very concerned with Carmelo's taking all my parking for, and leaving none for Hurricane Charlie's. I think it's a problem. I hope there's not going to be any signs directing people for the restaurant to park in the public parking. I hope there's not an agreement that gives them priority to the public parking. But it is a problem, okay? It's going to have to be resolved. It's going to be a big issue with people parking up and down Reta. Cars going around in circles looking for parking. It's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Anybody else like to speak? Please line up over here at the podium.
Bruce Lashley. I have been sworn. And I'm sure the City Council and most people in this room understand that the way the City of Punta Gorda is laid out, City of Fort Myers, Sarasota, very few restaurants in these cities have parking lots. Let's name them. Turtle Club, where's their parking lot? River City Grill, Italian, they use public parking spots. We have four major public city-owned parking, parking in Punta Gorda. One is at Lashley Park. One's the parking garage. One is right next to the Watzke Building in Olympia. And the one right behind City Hall is the fourth. These parking lots, we're a walking community. You park in a public parking lot, just like you do in City of Fort Myers. You walk to all the restaurants. We share these. Not only that, is we have cross-agreements with Four Point Sheridan, the Event Center, City Marketplace, Dwight Vern, that we all share parking together. So parking is not a problem. It's like any other city. Thank you.
Thank you. Very last call. Seeing none. Yes, go ahead.
Regarding the parking situation. We've lived in the historic district, the 200 block of Duran Street, from April 2005 until April of 2000. And where are we now, 2017?
Seventeen.
So intimately, intimately knowledgeable of who parks on the parking right over here and when that parking is full or when that parking isn't full. Believe me, on Saturdays, on Fridays, on Thursdays, on Wednesdays, on Sundays, it's very few times, very few times, that that parking is full right behind City Hall. Even when there are events going on in Gilchrist Park, for whatever reason, for whatever reason, people are just not filling up that parking lot. Now, maybe that'll change. We get the restaurant in here, they're welcome to use the parking, just as the gentleman just said. The way the city has been situated, we put up a parking garage, 400 spaces. They're free. They're for use for the downtown. They're for use for businesses. They're for use for visitors. Herald Hector House Plaza, right near the Watzke Building, right across the street from where Carmelo's is now. That's public parking. That's for use for visitors. That's for use for people who want to visit the restaurants or the other businesses downtown. The Crab House. We put up public parking there for the park as well as for the businesses that are in that park as well. Public parking, it's free. That's the way we designed it. And we encourage people to use that to help out not only our business community, but for the visitors.
Okay, so we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. My problem is still with the parking on Harvey Street. I'm more than happy to review what is in place there before we make any changes. Yes?
That was just, the condition only suggests that the applicant and the intervenor are going to petition. It's not going to be part of this rezoning. You'll have an opportunity to address that in the future.
Okay.
So you'll have staff input if they do petition.
So that was their formal request today as to petition that?
No. It was, it was an agreement between themselves that they're going to-
To ask us.
To ask us. It's not part of this rezoning.
Okay, so we're not-
They're not going to make a decision today about-
But we can, we can say today that we are going to look at it.
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is everybody okay with looking at it?
Yes.
And looking at it in a more comprehensive way, just like we talked about earlier? Yes.
And I would say that if, in fact, we do have on our ordinances already that there should be no parking, as was mentioned, on, on a particular side of Harvey, if that exists. I'm just making a excuse.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, Urban Design Manager, and I have been sworn that the section of Harvey Street that limits the parking to only one side is the 200 block that lies between West Marion Avenue and West Olympia Avenue. That section of Harvey Street is, is narrow. And so that one block of Harvey is limited.
Okay. Not enforced, but limited. Okay.
See, my thing is I think-
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, let Nancy finish when we'll come around again. Okay.
And if there are yellow areas that need to be repainted, that they should be painted. But I agree that we should take the request into consideration as we look at the overall picture. And as has been suggested, not just for Harvey, but maybe for all of the streets between Reta and Marion as well, so.
I'm okay with that. Gary, you have any comments? I'll go this way. Okay, Lynn?
Just one. When we were talking earlier, David mentioned that we would be, if, when we vote today, we have to include the agreement, the signed agreement. But doesn't that include all of the recommendations and requests from the applicant?
Yeah, it does, but it doesn't, you know, the conditions relating to where they'll, they will agree to petition does not do anything other than embrace the fact that they're going to come forward at some future time to ask us to do something. We are not, we are not granting the rezoning with a condition that we're going to do what they're going to ask us to do.
But we could decide that today. We could say that we will consider that.
I don't even think you need to get into that.
Okay.
No, because it sounds like, I mean, they came to their own private agreement that they themselves would petition us to do something. And so with review, we can decide to do something or not do something. But that's where that stands.
Right. And the only reason why I really wanted that to be as part of your rezoning is because even though conditions run with the land, if those conditions specifically identify one of the parties who's going to do something, the argument could be made that if the property is sold and that party is no longer specified in, as a condition, then we don't have any enforcement capability on a future purchaser. Whereas the agreement expressly indicates that those conditions that they agreed to amongst themselves, which for the most part are incorporated in the handout that we received today, expressly say that they'll run with the land. So I'm more comfortable that way. And we can adopt these too. I haven't had the opportunity to compare the agreement between the parties and these to make sure that both are identical. So my recommendation is going to be, what would be to, if you're going to approve the rezoning, approve the rezoning with the condition that both the agreement, that, where the conditions that were provided today as well as the agreement between the parties be made part of that rezoning.
And would that be true on both sides of the restaurant ownership side and the house ownership side?
Yes.
They would both assign to the new owners?
Yes, that is correct.
So that's why we need to accept the agreement and not just the conditions so we have that intact with the rezoning, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other?
Just, just to reiterate, because we've heard some very good questions and points brought up. But we're not in a position, I don't believe today, even if we wanted to, to address whether we should have parking or no parking. We don't know what the standards are for Florida, for the width that you have for emergency vehicles to be able to go in, and when the parking and so forth. And that's what we would be asking staff to come to us with, with those informations so that we can make a proper, a proper knowledgeable discussion and then a resolution to that issue. So until that occurs, I don't think we're in a position to even make that decision. I think we can say that we would like to keep as much parking as possible, but we still have to take into consideration the safety of the community. And we don't have that information as, as I see it today.
So by accepting the agreement, we're not, that's okay. We're just accepting the fact that they're petitioning us.
They're going to petition.
Yep. So does everybody feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there anything you feel uncomfortable with? No. Okay, so we need-
Appreciate all the testimony, but I would like to make a motion to approve Z-01-17 with the addition of both the document that was submitted today as well as the-
The agreement.
The agreement that was submitted previously.
Second.
Probably, I don't know if the agreement-
Did I say everything?
Yeah, now, this too will need to be continued to the date certain and is also conditioned upon the approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Correct. Should we also say in the, in the motion that it meets the criteria?
That's assumed in your motion.
Okay, so we had a second?
A second.
Okay. Can the date certain be the same date?
Yes.
Okay. So we need to have the April 19?
Okay. Yes.
As part of the motion? Karen, you're good on the motion? Okay. And then for the April 19th, I would just suggest that we make sure we get all of the agreements and such into the agenda package so everybody can have a copy of the current situation. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, we are going to take a- Oh, yeah, we got to talk about that.
Well, the special exception, I'll, we'll open it up. I'll read it by title only, and then we're going to ask you to continue it to a date certain.
We do have to continue it because of the advertising and the implementation?
Well, we, it's, this does not require more than one public hearing. And we can't adopt the special exception until the rezoning and the comprehensive plan are adopted and finalized.
So at the next meeting, we will have the two second readings, the one on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the one on the rezoning, and then we will hear the special exception for the restaurant.
Right. And so what we'll do is, I'm going to open, we'll open the public hearing on this, and then we will ask you to continue it to the April 19th date.
Okay.
So this is SE-01-17, a request by Bruce Lashley, applicant and authorized agent on behalf of Don L. Horn and Federico Zuccarelli, I hope I pronounced that correctly, as trustees of the Don L. Horn Trust, UAD, January 8th, 2008, for a special exception pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.8, Punta Gorda Code, to allow a restaurant within 200 feet of the neighborhood residential zoning district boundary as is permitted by special exception approval per Chapter 26, Section 3.9 F-10, Punta Gorda Code, on property addressed as 321 West Reta Esplanade, which is currently zoned neighborhood residential zoning district and pending rezoning to the City Center zoning district.
So we need a motion to continue?
Correct.
Motion to continue.
The public hearing. Motion to continue the public hearing until April?
Yes, until, a motion to continue the public hearing on SE-01-17 until April 19th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue the special exception. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, so April 19th, we will have two second readings and then the special exception hearing. And now we will take a short break. 10 minutes.
How are you doing? All right? I came to see you.
We are now back in session. And the first item of business we have is GA-01-17. And we will take citizens' comments on the second reading. Should we read the title?
Yes, we shall.
Read the title, then we'll take citizens' comments, and then we'll do the business.
Well, this is not, well, I mean, it's, it's, sure.
Citizens' comments.
Yeah, no problem. All right, this is GA-01-17, which is the second reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance relating to the provision of services, facilities, programs, and local improvements in the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, authorizing the imposition and collection of assessments against property within the incorporated area of the City of Punta Gorda, providing certain definitions and defining the terms assessment, special assessment, and capital assessment, providing for the creation of assessment areas, establishing the procedures for imposing assessments, establishing procedures for notice and adoption of assessment rolls, providing that assessments constitute a lien on assessed property upon adoption of the assessment roll, providing that the lien for an assessment collected pursuant to Sections 197.3632 and 197.3635 Florida statutes upon perfection shall attach to the property on the prior January 1st, the lien date for ad valorem taxes, providing that a prefer, a perfected lien shall be equal in rank and dignity with the liens of all state, county, district, or municipal taxes and assessments, and superior in dignity to all other prior liens, mortgages, titles, and claims, authorizing exemptions and hardship assistance, providing procedures for collection of assessments, providing a mechanism for the imposition of assessments on government property, authorizing the issuance of obligations secured by assessments and providing for the terms thereof, providing that city's taxing power shall not be pledged, providing remedies deeming that pledged revenues shall be considered trust funds, providing for the refunding of obligations, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Okay, so this is the second reading. It is not a public hearing. But if you would like to speak on this item that he just read, now would be the time. Do you have any citizens' comments regarding GA-01-17? Okay, seeing none. Any questions, comments, revisions?
Move approval.
We have a motion, a second, to approve GA-01-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have the consent agenda. We have one, two, three, four items. First, we have a lien foreclosure of 1601 Tamiami Trail. We have two item resolutions for CHINEP. And then we have the multi-jurisdictional trust force law enforcement mutual aid agreement. Anybody like to pull any one of those items?
Mayor?
Yes?
The minutes from the March 15th meeting were-
The minutes have been added to the online agenda, but not my paper copy, so I'm sorry for that. But the minutes for, also the minutes of the March 15th meeting are included in the consent agenda. So we have five items. Anybody like to pull any one of those items? Nope. Okay, citizens' comments on consent agenda items now would be the time. If you'd like to speak on any one of those five items. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move into the regular agenda. And we have citizens' comments. So if you would like to speak on the CHINEP Habitat Restoration Plan, the Maud and Marion Avenue intersection, the fence height. Discussion regarding maximum fence height and method of measurement. Now would be the time. So if you would like to speak on the regular agenda items, please make your way to that podium, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jan at Watermire with the Visual Arts Center. And I'm here to, to talk about the Maud and Marion intersection. And I'm really pleased that you're taking a look at that intersection because it's almost every day we come out during season and we see lines of traffic trying to come out of Fisherman's Village. People going down Marion Avenue get confused at that intersection as to where things are going. But I'm hoping you will also take a broader look and extend that look to Maud and Olympia because it's still part of that same traffic pattern. And you have that same issue as people are coming from Punta Gorda Isles onto Olympia and turning at Maud. And maybe that four-way, a four-way stop or a traffic signal or whatever plan your team comes up with, the only option that I've read about so far that concerns me is the narrowing of the lane. And that concerns me because that's an area where we're going to see nothing but increased traffic as we go on. And so I'm afraid that that, particularly with some of the new development that's going on along Marion, will become a problem long-term. So long-term, please, thank you for taking a look. A comprehensive look would really be appreciated. Thank you.
And so you would be available if we needed to ask you questions?
Absolutely available. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular agenda items, if you would like to speak, please come to the podium.
Good morning. My name's John LaCory. I'm the owner of Atlas Fence Company. I'm here because we, I guess, we had an issue. We failed an inspection on a fence for the height for aluminum. This particular fence is also being used as a child's safety barrier on a new construction home. So it has guidelines that we have to follow from the state as far as the height requirements. It has to be a minimum of 48 inches tall. With the city, it has to be a maximum of 48 inches tall. With the city, it has to be a maximum of forty-eight inches tall. None of the properties here are flat. We try to make the fences as appealing as possible so they look nice. We did the fence over at the community garden, that's kind of the same situation, where there's some rolling in the property, but we like to make it, you know, look beautiful, so we keep them nice and flat. Also, the property slopes down a hill, so this particular one failed because it's up a little bit higher. Also, people can weed eat underneath the fences without destroying the, the finish on the aluminum fence. The gates have to be self-closing, self-latching for, for child safety code for state statute, which means the gate has to be off the ground. The aluminum fence is actually forty-eight inches tall from the top of the top to the bottom of the bottom. So to comply with the forty-eight inches tall for the city, essentially, I'd have to slam the gate to the ground, which it wouldn't open or close. We've never had an issue. I've been doing business here for seven or eight years, I probably have hundreds of fences of the same style, same aluminum, same manufacturer. We've never had a problem. Now, I guess it's an issue, so hopefully we can get something resolved, so we can continue to make nice, straight, pretty fences that keep the community looking beautiful instead of slamming everything to the ground and having roller coasters in every yard. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, and you would be available as well as, if we have any questions, thank you. Anybody else like to speak on regular agenda, Chinep Habitat Restoration, the Maude intersection, the fence? Make your way to the podium, please.
I'm Judy Witcher, I live at Starboard Point here in Puntagorda, and I have not been sworn.
You don't need it, yeah.
I don't?
Nope.
We trust you.
I'd like to speak about the, um, problem that we have, uh, at the entrance of Fisherman's Village and Marion. There hardly goes, a day goes by where we don't listen to sirens and, um, accidents that are happening out there. Our, um, our, the entry to our development is, or our condos, is, is the next one after Fisherman's Village. So it makes it not only treacherous watching these people exiting Fisherman's, but we need to take an immediate right to get into our units. And often, people are just coming out of Fisherman's Village, they don't see that we're turning. If, if we are, um, coming down or up Marion, um, if you put a blinker on, people are assuming you're gonna go into Fisherman's Village, and then that causes a problem, too. So, um, I wish I had a recommenda, do we have an overlay of that, of that, um, area? I mean, in order to make a recommendation for, um, for an alternative design, you kinda have to look at what's there. I know you've talked a little bit about a roundabout. Again, I would be concerned about how that was designed in conjunction with the two driveways, um, going off of Marion. And talk about parking, um, there, there is not adequate parking for Fisherman's Village. We have people going into our units and, um, using our exits, we have people parking in our units. And it, it's, it's just a massive mess there right now, and it's a danger to pedestrians, to bicyclists, as well as motorists. That's it.
Hi, my name is Sandra Lesprance, and I too live at Starboard Point. And I'm the end unit right next to the street, so I really, really hear the horns and the screeching and tire screeching. There's even been cars in the pond across from us, cars in the pond at Fisherman's Village, ponds, cars in the canal behind us. Uh, it's quite interesting some days. Some days, there's multiple accidents, and, um, it's usually multiple accidents when Fisherman's Village is having one of their major, um, events, you know, the pirate event, the lighting of the, uh, Christmas lighting. And I always thought, why isn't somebody directing traffic out there? Well, they park on our street, they park in our complex across the way. There's never anybody directing traffic out there. And now there, there are signs that, for the overflow parking, and they're not consistent where they're put out. They're put out in our first driveway or our second driveway, and that's two lanes, one way. And somebody will be in the right lane and see the overflow sign up here and just directly go over, and, you know, you can hear it. I mean, I'm sitting in my den and crash, you know. Since two thousand and, I just, for some reason, I don't know why, I kept a little notebook, but since two thousand and nine, I've counted forty-five accidents that I witnessed in, from Fisherman's Village to our driveway. That's a lot, so something needs to be done. I don't know what the solution is, it's, you know, lights at Fisherman's, but that's, I don't, I don't know what will do it, but something really does need to be done, and thank you for taking up the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Good morning, Patty Allen, General Manager of Fisherman's Village, and I was the one that brought this issue to the city. There's nothing worse for us as well is hearing sirens. We, we never want to see that. And most accidents, I believe, are not coming out from Fisherman's Village, but are, and, and I'm sure you have a presentation, that are turning, turning from the right lane over to the left lane. I think we've done, uh, in season, it truly is a problem, and as we continue to get more popular, it's a good thing. We have an arrangement with Five Star, and we also utilize the, uh, over, uh, the public parking just next to Five Star. And so we're doing our best to manage the situation. So I am available for questions, and certainly would, uh, love a solution and work with my neighbors as we always have to, and with the city, to solve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, we will have a presentation, and if we, we need questions at that time, we'll take them then.
Hi, Jim Morrison, I live at Starboard Point also. A big part of the problem with the accidents at that intersection, folks are coming down here. They've heard of Fisherman's Village, they know it's a quarter-long development of shops and restaurants, and they're driving through a residential area, and you cannot see the Fisherman's Village sign until it's too late. You got that big blue sign, it's pretty and everything, but you're, you're well beyond the entrance to Merrill Lynch there before you can see the sign. That has to change. An easy alternative, I would think, and I don't know what Florida's laws or Puntagorda's laws are, is an overhead sign as you're coming down Marion, so that people are aware they're on a one-way road. That happens quite a bit, people do not know they're on a one-way street there, and that Fisherman's Village is gonna go off to the right. If, that was clearly marked just before Shreve or just after Shreve, I think that'd solve a lot of the problems. You wouldn't necessarily need to train, change your traffic patterns or anything else. It's just if people are aware they're on a one-way street, and they want to make that right, solves a whole lot of problems. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jean Palowski in Puntagorda. I am a retired safety engineer. I've done over a hundred racetracks, so I understand, uh, safety regulations on them and the devices that we use. This gentleman brought up a good, uh, thing. This is the second time this issue's come up. It came up about four years ago, as you recall. And one of the solutions of relieving the pressure at the intersection that you're talking about is to make the entrance to Fisherman's Village just past the creek there, okay? Where the, the pathway goes across, and right now, that's a parking area, and you have a road through there, it's paved through there. So if you entered and put a sign, as this gentleman just said, before the wooded area there, that told you that you're gonna turn right for the entrance to Fisherman's Village, and take it over to your main road, take it west past the entrance and the feeders, all into the lots, and try and put the pressure so that the exit to Fisherman's Village was Maude Street. So you're gonna take about twenty-five percent of the traffic that is turning into Fisherman Village at Maude, out of there. So this is gonna relieve a lot of pressure from you. It's a principle that we use in slip gates for racetracks and so forth. So I think that you ought to investigate that type of pressure relief. You may want to put in a left-turn lane for the Visual Arts Center up at Maude Street, take some pressure off to the left. The other thing that you can do, and there's a lot of resistance in this town, but it's an easy fix, and that will save a few lives, is to reduce the speed limit to twenty-five from thirty. Thank you.
Anybody else on regular agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into the budget award of the Agreement for Chinep Habitat Restoration Plan. Anybody? No?
We're recommending approval of the award.
Recommending approval?
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the award of Agreement for, um, Chinep Habitat Restoration Plan Update to Environmental Science Associates, ESA of Tampa, Florida.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And just note that we all have to sign this conflict of interest form that I'm hoping we have in our originals today.
Does somebody have a copy? I was assuming that the clerk might have had a copy that we...
It's in the originals for everyone's signature.
Is it in there?
It's in the originals folder.
Okay, so before you leave, we all need to sign off.
Okay.
That we have no conflict of interest with this award. Federal government at work. Okay, next, we're gonna take the discussion regarding the maximum height fence and methodology for measurement.
Good morning. For the record, Terry Tubbs, Urban Design Manager. I was contacted yesterday by a fence contractor, um, Mr. LaGory, who, who did speak earlier. The fence style that, uh, he used, as well as from research that I've done, many of the fence panels, they are exactly that forty-eight inches. And the method that the manufacturer has created for installing them actually does have the bottom of the fence, the intent is for it to be elevated a few inches, inch, two inches above grade, as well as the end posts and the section posts either have a decorative cap or the top of the fence, it actually has a slot where it's supposed to go into that fence post. Recently, we did have, um, a couple of neighbors who were disputing the heights of each other's fences, and it boiled down to more the, uh, end posts that, that were taller, which is what prompted me to, uh, to write the memo that's within the, uh, agenda packet. However, I do understand the issue with trying to maintain that forty-eight inches, allow a gate to open and close, as well as, uh, allow for the slight differentials in grade, not to mention larger hills. Within the packet, I've included some of these, uh, various fence types. And depending on the fenced, fence type, uh, you might be able to keep the forty-eight inches. Other fence types, it is, uh, not likely to be possible. It's not a very good image. This white fence is one where the, the posts actually have the slots in the side that dictate where that, where that goes, as well as that you're going to have the taller, um, support posts. So this is what we run into. Uh, the land development regulations are very literal. When they say the maximum height is forty-eight inches, uh, staff has no options other than to hold the fences to forty-eight inches. Zoning didn't previously do fence final inspections, which is why there hasn't been an issue prior. We did start doing those over the past year or so, and, um, you know, and we've basically gone with panel height. And as I said, the style of the fence is gonna dictate whether they can stay within that and not have the fence literally on the ground. So it's for council discussion as to whether we need to do an amendment to allow for a couple of inches for the actual height of the fence, as long as the panel itself does not exceed that forty-eight inches.
Terry, would you go back one photo, please? The, um, about two-thirds of the way down is what the gentleman was describing about, uh, you know, how if on a slope, the forty-eight inch panel is going to be on top of, you know, higher than the other. You have any suggestions?
I mean, I heard the conflict between the pool barrier, the code for the pool barrier, and the fence code is in conflict. So if these people are using the fence as the pool barrier, I think we need to have some consideration for that.
Yeah, and the code does allow for, because it, it basically says that the latch needs to be fifty-four inches, and the code does allow for the latch to be, so you do, you end up with this post that sticks above the fence. Um, I've seen them, uh, on several locations. If there were, uh, as long as the panel itself did not exceed that forty-eight inches, and it was installed as closely as reasonable to the grade, to allow for three or four inches of, what, wiggle room, for lack of a better term, so that the, the fences could be installed the way they are intended to be installed and meet the intent of the code, uh, but not the literal reading of what it currently says.
That would be fine.
I would agree with that. Yeah, I think that we need to be reasonable on this, and it's, you know, I mean, it's easy to shoot a line with a laser and say, well, there's how we want it. And I understand we don't want it to be kind of like we have a sidewalk in town on a certain street. So, um, not to name streets, but, um, so, yeah, I'm good.
Gary?
I would like to ask the contractor, in his opinion, what would be a, a reasonable amount of inches that he would need?
In, in my opinion, I would say, realistically, most of the grass in, in PGI is St. Augustine grass. You got grass that's three inches thick. So, I mean, if you're taking a tape measure and the inspector's slamming it down into the dirt, you know, you're talking almost three inches, you know, for, so to be able to weed eat, when we go out there and install fences, I try to leave it one to two inches above the grass. And that's, you know, being reasonable with the grass height, so the guys can actually run a weed eater without destroying the powder coat off the fence. Also, all these properties slope down to the canal, and you can see it's kind of the reverse of this. But this panel here, you'll see, the one side is slammed on the ground. When you start coming up the slope, you've got three or four inches, and, and, and basically, when you're going down a hill, you got a six-foot panel, you'll have panel at the center of it's on the ground, and we're still gonna have three inches at each post side. So I would say realistically, two inches, maybe three inches from above the grass, it just depends on how the grass is.
So if it's St. Augustine grass, you're saying that could be three to four inches, so you're asking for six to seven inches?
If you're slamming it, yeah, if, that's if you're slamming it down into the dirt. I mean, I would say two inches above the grass is, is generally good, unless you're going down big slopes, which then we don't have a choice. I mean, ideally, I want the fence to look beautiful, that, that's,
No, I understand.
And I want to be realistic, you know, I mean, clearly, if you're putting a fence six inches off the ground, there's an issue. I mean, there's, you know, that's not reasonable whatsoever. You know, two inches, three inches, you know, I mean, at the garden center, we've got areas that are six inches off the ground, but that there's slopes, you know, the washouts, stuff like that.
I'm, I'm just trying to be clear, because what you're, I agree with you, you know, two inches above the grass, I think we can all conceptualize that.
Yeah.
But then if somebody comes down and slams down to the bottom of the grass, that can skew, you know, because you're, you're saying the problem is, is that the code is so literal, and that you have to abide for that, so...
And that we just started measuring.
I don't know how to develop.
Yeah, common sense has always taken over in the past, and they've looked at it and say, okay, this looks good.
So the point is, is how do you make it either less literal, or how do you make the literal fit the, the application?
Yeah, currently, it says we measure from grade, so that, that is the ground, it's not the grass.
Well, how about this? I mean, the panels themselves are, are prefab, correct?
Correct, they're forty-eight inches from the top to the bottom.
Why don't we just require that the panels be no greater than forty-eight inches?
Well, we have to, because we don't want them way up in the air.
If, if they're way up in the air, it defeats the purpose of the fence.
And these are open-style fences, also. These aren't privacy fencing, so it, it, the fence in question was a two-rail aluminum, the exact same fence that's on the screen here. So really, if it's two inches off the ground or inch and a half off the ground, it, it's not gonna visually affect much of anything. To have it look straight across the property, in my opinion, looks nicer than having it up, down, up, down.
Can we put some language as, with a reasonable installation? I mean, could it be to, you know, some discretion that it was a reasonable installation based on the area, based on the, the terrain?
I think you're putting too much discretion in if you do that.
Well, we're already, yeah, we're already, I mean, now we're going literal.
The, the, the state statue is a four-inch spear for child safety. I would be good with a four-inch spear ball.
Oh, like you couldn't fit it underneath?
If you could stick a four-inch spear underneath the bottom rail, I would be good with that, because, once again, the grass generally is two to three inches thick, depending on how it's being cut. So when you take that tape measure and they slam it to grade... on how it's being cut. So when you take that tape measure and they slam it to grade, you're losing three inches right off. I mean, the grass out here is thick, so-
I've got the kind of grass you're talking about.
Yeah.
And what about the top, the, the, uh, how much from the cap?
That depends on the fence. Vinyl fencing usually has a two-inch post that sticks up two inches higher. The aluminum, depending on the styles, anywhere from two to three inches higher. Um, you know, that, that's a two-inch difference. So the posts almost always stick up two to three inches higher than the fencing. And I don't think that was part of the issue, though, that I'm aware of.
Yeah, uh, when I looked up some specifications just at the local, um, hardware stores, the, uh, some of them have decorative caps that are four inches.
Yeah, Gothic caps.
Yeah, that, that do stand up taller, and it's simply decorative. It's-
Nancy?
Are you looking for us to actually make a decision on how many inches? Or are you looking for us just to say, yes, we agree that this is an issue, and that, you know, perhaps then this can go back to staff and let staff work out the specifics and come back to us?
We could do that as long as-
It's a question. 'Cause if you, you know-
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we could sit here and try to come up with all kinds of things, but, you know, it's like, really, is that, that something staff can, can do? And work this out and come back to us?
And in the meantime, hold his, his vinyl and-
And I have a semi-truck sitting at my place right now, full of material that needs to be unloaded of aluminum for four jobs here in Punta Gorda. So that, that's why my concern was, I've got $15,000 or so worth of material. That's the same material that's for open swimming pools here in the city, and I just don't want it to further compound this problem by installing four more of these, and have all them fail inspection, hold up the COs on homes. So that was my, my main issue was, was-
I mean, I just don't want to belabor this.
Lynn?
I just think we have to be realistic about this. We can't hold people up with building homes or, or putting fences up that are required by code or whatever else. Um, I, I think we need to leave that up to staff to make a, a good decision about it. Um, looking at 48-inch panels being the maximum height for the panels, that's an easy decision. Some of them are gonna have caps. That's also an easy decision. I think the only issue that we really have to talk about is how high up from grade. And if we put a limit on it, then we, I think we have a simple solution.
Go ahead.
Like, you know, like what David said, just the 48 inches, if we, I think if we put in the code that we give, this is staff discretion, that's just with those words. Because the wiggle room thing is, however we can say the word wiggle room legally, because it's reasonable. I mean, you know, I have to-
Well, if the state code uses this four-inch sphere-
That's for pool, for, for using it as a pool fence.
Well, that's, and that's the, that's what you're doing.
This one, yes.
That's the installation that you're going by on these cases. All of these cases, or just this one?
Not all of them. We're doing also, you know, decorative fencing, like at the garden over here. That, that's not for pool code, but it's the same style of fencing.
But it's still a same reasonable installation, typical installation that he may be doing. So I would be fine with that.
We've never had a problem up in, in the seven years we've been doing this, we probably have a hundred something aluminum fences, so-
That's helpful. So what we can do is, in, in coming up with language, um, which will allow, allow us to also address the maximum height, including the cap, um, the city council can direct staff that until we amend the ordinance, that you'll accept as, as acceptable, uh, a maximum of four inches from the natural grade for, um, the bottom of the fence.
Yes.
That makes sense.
So that's a temporary-
Moratorium or waiver.
Temporary.
Does that work for you?
It, it should. I mean, the, the only concern I have, and once again, feel free, if anybody has time, to look at the garden over there. It's, it's the same thing. There's areas that are washed out that are, and, and that fence is gorgeous. It's beautiful. If I were to take that fence halfway down a 300-foot run and dip one panel, because there's a washout, the whole thing would look horrendous.
But it wouldn't be the natural grade, would it?
Right.
And really, in a residential yard, I think the grass will be intact, and then we can use that.
Most are decent, yes. So, yeah, I would be, I would agree with that. That would be good enough for me.
For residential-
Yes.
For a residential installation.
Yes. We can work on that as long as we do, uh, you know, if staff has the authority to, uh-
Yes.
Allow him to continue to work.
I was gonna say, from the top of the grade, because we noticed that, like you say, if there's a washout, it could be five or six inches, you know, but-
They've always used discretion in the past. We have never had a problem. Never. I, I mean, usually, you can look, and you can tell if someone's trying to get away with being slick and leaving something off the ground for a ridiculous reason. If, if common sense, if you're looking, okay, there's a hole there, it's always been, the inspectors have said, okay.
If you have a washout, you're not having 50 feet of washout. You're having-
No. Correct. One panel.
I think you do, I think if you, I don't know, David, if you could put in some of what the natural grade is.
Yeah, we, I mean, there's words like average, natural grade, things of that nature.
Yeah.
And if they have a sinkhole by the seawall, we'll come repair that for them.
Yes.
No, it's a depression. It's not a sinkhole. It's a depression.
A depression. If they have a depression in the six feet, we can have a sinkhole.
And that's why we-
We will come fix that for them.
And that's another thing, too, with the water wings. They have to swing open and close. The water wings do. And that's another thing. If I were to take that water wing and slam it down to grade, now it doesn't open. It, it hits the grass, so same, same issue.
Okay, so I think we solved your problem temporarily, and then-
Excellent.
When we hear the other, if you could come back and give us some more input, we'd really appreciate it.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Yep.